The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, unagarrable, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's right. You didn't do it.
Okay, I would like to take this time to welcome everyone. It's always nice to have a good crowd here for our meetings. If that's what you call the roll.
Gilbra.
Here.
Brockman.
Here.
Campbell.
Here.
Ober.
Here.
Downey.
Yes.
Oswald.
Here.
To.
Here.
And all eight present. Next we'll have the approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. If everyone's had an opportunity to read the minutes, I would entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Hygbert, second by Oswald, that we approved the minutes of the previous meeting. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say no, the ayes have it. Next we'll have approval of bills, lake bills, Lake Edhuck bills, Lake Watershed. Everyone's had an opportunity to take a look at the bills. I would also entertain a motion to approve, or if there's any revisions or corrections, I'll let them know here. Might want to take a few minutes to take a look.
Okay, next a motion to approve the bills.
Okay, motion has been made by Alderman Oswald, second by Alderman Hygbert, that we approve the bills, lake bills, Lake Edhuck bills, Lake Watershed. If there's no comment on that, the court will call the roll.
To.
Yes.
Oswald.
Aye.
Hygbert.
Yes.
Downey.
Yes.
Ober.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Brockman.
Aye.
Gilbra.
Yes.
Okay, the motion has passed with eight. Now, we're going to move the agenda here just a little bit. We have Cameron Wayne Stroobi here today, the Eagle Scout. He's been here before. He has been out at the school in about 20 minutes. So if you don't mind, we're gonna move him up to the front so we... What do you have? What's going on?
Musical rehearsal.
Oh, you got a rehearsal. All right. We want to make sure we get you there. Okay, Mr. Stroobi, you want to come up to the front? And would you like to have your dad come up with you? Mom, everybody? All right. Why don't we just stand over here? All right, Mr. Cameron. He's been here before, so he's not a stranger to us. What were you here for before?
My citizenship and the community merit badge.
Okay, so now we're down to the big stuff, right?
Yep.
Okay. This is a proclamation honoring Cameron Wayne Stroobi, Eagle Scout recipient. Whereas the city of Carlinville takes pride in its sense of community and citizen involvement, and whereas the Eagle Scout is obligated to live his life with honor, loyalty, courage, and service, and whereas Cameron Wayne Stroobi, for his Eagle Scout project, refreshed Camp Mac girls' shower. Is that correct?
Good.
And whereas Cameron Wayne Stroobi's commitment to leadership, service, and the community is reflected in his steady, persistent progress through the ranks to achieve this prestigious award. Now therefore, on behalf of the City Council and residents of the city of Carlinville, do hereby honor Cameron Wayne Stroobi, a Boy Scout Troop 63, on his achievement of attaining the rank of Eagle Scout, the highest-ranked in Boy Scout. In witness whereof, I have here unto set my hand and consciute the city of Carlinville to be affixed this fourth day of February 2019. Dr. Stroobi. Okay, I'm gonna give one more with his award. All right? There you go. Let's get that award in there.
Looks good.
All right. Congratulations, guys. And you have time to spare. All right? Okay, we're gonna move on down now in correspondence on the yes, no, public comment. Anyone have anything they would like to make a comment on or hear?
All right.
If not, we're moving down to old business. And we have IARWC update and a presentation. And on man's, we have Henneken and Associates. Mom, you're gonna put it on the screen.
I'm gonna put it back here. I apologize. I'm gonna ask everybody to flip around and watch your eyes and try to project this on the screen. You might kill one of those lights. Can you just one second?
Okay, well, two doors, maybe two dark.
It'll brighten.
While Bob's getting that set up, I was gonna...
It'll get brighter.
It started on the updating part. So tonight I wanted to give a little bit more of a comprehensive update about the current project status for IARWC. It's kind of an always-evolving thing because we're still working through the Guide 3 section to get to closing with rural development. So every day there's something new going on trying to move those items forward. So this is today's snapshot of where we're at. So as I've talked about several times in updates, the largest action items that we've been working on are water purchase agreements. The company board worked on each of the agreements that have now been sent to their respective boards for approval. Each contract is a little bit different based on the need and input of those entities and what they needed their contract to say. So that was kind of the beauty of being able to work on those together, protect them for your interests as well as the company's. So we were able to get those ready. Test wells, we've been working on that, acquiring the right to dig them and purchase the sites. And also, there were some environmental things to work around as far as hunting seasons and things like that. So I think this is the end of March. We have to wait because of hunting season. So we've been working on that. We've been talking about bridge financing, working on what's required, what's in place, and we'll be bringing more information out soon about that. Water plant site acquisition is a big project for us too. And we're working with a landowner who secured the right to purchase that property and kind of an engineering layout of that site. So we're gonna show you that tonight, some pictures and things of the site. And we're also gonna walk through a little bit of the blueprints on what we think we're gonna do there. So, and we're also starting to work on easements, kind of deciding what our process is gonna be. That's gonna be a very big task for us to undertake. So we're kind of talking about the process that we need to go through to obtain those and kind of establishing the workload and the format of how that's all gonna go. So we're still working on that. So recently, I'm off one day a week from my job, and so I took that day and went to Henneken. I met with Ronnie Paul, and we went through some drone video in his office that they had taken of, like, they did a drone video of the path that the Trump line could have taken, and we're gonna show you some of that tonight. And we'll go through a little bit of why they do that and things like that. But, so we went and we looked at that, and then we just kind of got in the car and drove to the plant site. And we, I got out, took some pictures, walked around the site where we're gonna build things, and then we went, drove down to where the wells would be, and we, I got to see where that was gonna be. We actually ran into the property owner while we were there, which was really interesting. And we got to talk to him for a while, and I'll talk about that. Then we just drove the path that the line will take from the well site up and around Jerseyville and then back into town. So it was a really good day. It was very informative, and it really helped me kind of reconnect with what you're doing because you make decisions in a room and, you know, get out there. It's kind of like when you put a face with a name and you just kind of start reconnecting with, okay, this is really a cool project. So I enjoyed it, and I thought maybe you guys would enjoy seeing some of it too. So that's why I wanted to do this tonight. So first slide, this is a familiar sight to most everybody in this room. We've all seen this. This is just the path that our project is gonna take. It shows, we're gonna get into more, like, closer up map, so you'll be able to see where the treatment plant site is and all of that. But on the far left is the well sites and the plant site, and we kind of drove that wood line. I guess it's an ink box. In the middle is Jerseyville, and we kind of drove how we're gonna go around that back there. So that was interesting to see what that would... And there were also some Jersey County rural well, or water towers back there, so we went to see those too. So that was interesting. And then obviously, the right, the far right, is the Carlinville connection, and we're gonna talk about some of that. There's some drone video that's gonna be really cool for us because I thought it was very interesting. So we're gonna show some of that too, of that section where Carlinville's line is gonna come in. So on the second slide, this next slide, I think, I don't know. They changed a little bit. So, okay, so this is the slide. This slide shows, the blue box is the property that we're gonna purchase. And then the yellow section is where we're gonna have the well. There's six wells that we're projecting we're gonna dig, and that's all on one landowner's property. So when we went down to that site, the yellow area, we kind of pulled down that county road and parked by the barn. And Ronnie was just kind of pointing out where we were gonna be, where we were gonna dig him. And he came driving up and pulled up next to us and talked to us. I got to meet him. He's a really great guy. Just a really interesting person to talk to. He told a story about when his grandfather used to farm that, or great-grandfather, years and years ago, that he would, he was still using horses, and he would go down there and dig like a three-foot section, three feet down, three feet around, and he would water the horses because the water would just come up to the surface. And he really thought it was, it was cool what we were gonna do. So it was, it was really interesting to hear someone talk about their genuine curiosity at the innovation of a project like this and just what we're gonna get to do. And he was so anxious to see it accomplished and kind of wanted to talk to us about it. So that was an encouragement to me, just to hear the curiosity and interest that other people have when they heard about what we're gonna do, especially somebody whose property is gonna be one of the sites. So it was, it was a great day to kind of run into him and talk to him. So this is just a closer-up view of that. It's all this farmland down there and fields. And so that section there, there's where it shows where we were, this is where we were parked, and there was a barn right, right near there, where he was kind of working down there that day. And we'll talk a little bit more about that, the wells and such, when we get to where Bob's gonna kind of go over that. So these are some, just some of the pictures that I took. It's hard to get a good visual of what it looks like just because it's winter and you're just looking at dirt basically, but it is, it's a really neat place down there, and just to get to talk to them was the cool thing. So I think it's jumping around on you. It just jumped way through all the slides. So I think the next one will be, there'll be some sample well information. I'm just gonna let, kind of talk a little bit about that slide.
I'm gonna set the lace, Cindy, so I don't mess up. Sure. So I'll show you where we're headed, and then I'll go back to the engineering sheet on the left. So this is actually a picture of the city's new wells, current well field, just to get everybody an idea of what the finished product looks like in the end. The alluvial well field will be very similar. Like Cindy said, there's six proposed sites right now based on the current average daily usage that we're looking at. So these platforms, everything that I'm interested in is below the ground. This is just the, what everybody can see, but it's elevated, obviously, because we are down in the floodplain, so Illinois EPA has us elevate those to a certain level so that everything is safe. Here's an example. Of course, we need backup power supply to run the well pumps, so we recover during all times. This is another project we've done, and an elevated generator set. So that's kind of some of the finished infrastructure that you will have. This sheet over here on the left, this is a schematic or a concept view. So this is like a cutaway section through one of those Jerseyville wells. It'll be similar. You can see the platform up here, the wellhead. Things on here are like the well casing, the interior well pipe, the screening. All these things are important to Illinois EPA because we send this in to them, and they'll approve it on your behalf. So all the detailed engineering things that we are going through now will eventually be plopped on this drawing, and it'll become a final drawing. And then there'll be many other pages of details that go along with that. So it's really just kind of the starting point for the raw water supply.
I think the next one is, okay, so this is just kind of an aerial of what we're, how things are gonna be positioned for the water treatment plant. So we entered at, down in front of this blue box from the road.
This is Illinois Highway 16.
And it's a pretty steep entrance there. It's even more steep down further. So we have discussed how we might have to change some of the way that you enter and exit the site just to make it more safer for trucks and things like that. So those are some of the things we've had to look at based on this property because it is up the cliff from the floodplain where the wells will be, which is, which is great from an engineering perspective, I'm told, although I'm not gonna pretend like I fully understand all of that. But it is, the engineers feel confident that it's a good site for us. I did, I really enjoyed going to see it because, again, it's, you know, we've been talking, we had been talking about it for weeks, and I hadn't seen it, so it was good to go see it. It's a beautiful piece of property, and I can't really do it justice with pictures, although I'll show you some of them. But the blue rectangular section is where the water treatment plant is proposed to go. Just to the left of that, in the middle of the screen, there's a section of land there that is, the owner of the property is retaining because his home is that lighter section in the middle. And he's a beautiful home there, and he's gonna retain a little bit of that property. So we are kind of owning what's around him for now. So we're, the whole section, I believe, is 64 acres, and we're purchasing about 54. So he's gonna retain a little bit of that. The rectangular boxes that are kind of back behind the plant are, they're sludge lagoons. So it's just basically like a retention pond for waste that'll have to be trucked out eventually. So that's kind of what we're talking about when we are talking about how to make that approach to 16 a little safer. So those are things that we're working on also that'll have to be in the engineering for this project. And then there's a site over across, which we'll show in a minute, but we do wanna build the site with the ability to possibly have a sister plant in the future if the project continues to grow and we wanna add. So that, that'll be in there also. So I think the next slide is pictures of...
One thing we might wanna point out, Cindy, in our engineering world, so all these black lines that everybody can see on here, those are contour lines, so those denote changes in elevation. So where the plant, my battery's dead, where the plant and the lagoons are, you don't see many lines stacked together, so that's fairly flat, which is what we want there. And then the rest of the site, as you go west, you can see a lot of lines stacked together. As Cindy said, you have a lot of elevation change. So both of those things work together at our advantage. We'll talk about that later.
Okay. So these are just some pictures that I took while I was there. And again, it's winter. It was very, very, very cold that day, and very windy. But it is a beautiful sight. I mean, it really is a pretty piece of property. And so it was neat to get to see where everything was gonna lay out. So this just shows you kind of which direction we're facing, and you can see a little bit in the pictures where it looks down into the floodplain area. So that, that's really neat. So I think that's it on that, as far as what I wanted to point out. So I think, so the next few slides are gonna be some blueprints that we saw of the water treatment plant, just preliminary blueprints of the plan. I wanted to tell the story just because it was one of my favorite things. And we were at a meeting, it was two, two months ago or three months ago, and Max brought the plans for the first time to show us, so like, this is the water treatment plant. And he was talking, so he got them out, and he laid them on the table, and everybody, the board members just kind of got up and gathered around so he could talk, talk us through it. And it was really a cool moment because it was everybody just standing around, and he was describing it, and you could really tell that everybody was feeling like, this is gonna be so amazing when we get it finished. And, you know, he was talking about, once you know who's gonna be running it, then, you know, you wanna get their input on how things might wanna be set up. And so these are preliminary plans, obviously, but it was a good reminder because it's difficult to get, you know, you get bogged down in the details a little bit, and it's, you have the moments where, again, you reconnect with why you're doing what you're doing. It was a really neat moment. I wish I had taken a picture, but that probably wouldn't have been very professional in the moment, but I really wish I had because it was, it was a cool time to see everybody just get excited again about, you know, everybody'd been kind of, it was a difficult few months. We had legal issues and bad, you know, bad press. And it was good to feel excited again about what we're trying to accomplish on behalf of our community. So it was a good reminder to not forget why we're doing it. So I'm gonna let Bob talk to you a little bit about those preliminary plans and what their function is, and then we'll wrap things up.
Okay. So I'm not gonna go into the level of detail Max does. You all know Max. He's extremely knowledgeable. I'm not at that level. I don't pretend to be, so I'll keep this really high level, but I can answer questions. So my daughter's 16. She's in English class right now. I liken this first drawing, this is a schematic of the water treatment process. So just like in her English class, she has to write an outline to kind of get her thoughts together and show her teachers what she's gonna do. This schematic really sets everything in motion. It just circles and boxes where different treatment components go and how they lay out. And when you first take the raw water out of the wells that Cindy talked about, when it goes into the treatment training, how we filter it, what we do with it, that's our outline. It keeps us on task. It allows the alluvial board members to see those different boxes, and you start to get a definition to what each box means. And most importantly, we can share that with Illinois EPA so they can understand, we're on the same page, we're headed down the right path, given the parameters. We have things like water treatment, chemical feed, all going to this drawing. So on the engineering side, it's a really important drawing because we use it with all different kinds of groups to explain where we're headed at the end result. All that wording on the left, I'll be glad to answer questions on all that if anybody has any. It just kind of walks through the different major steps of what we'll be doing to treat this water and send it out to Carlinville and other communities. So that's ours, first schematic drawing. And then on the engineering side, what we do is we take that outline from our English class, and we start to put it into the body paragraphs or the paper so that we get some definition to where we're headed. So this is actually a plan view, looking down on the water treatment plant, and this is much more detailed. So we have preliminary layouts and dimensions, both horizontal and verticals. We work these into three-dimensional drawings as well, so we make sure everything fits properly. We have clearances for workers, there are basins, everything is sized properly, the handleability flow rates that we're talking about, and as Cindy talked about, the expandability features. Already at this early stage, we're thinking about who other members might be in the future, how we can easily expand this plant on the footprint of our property. So that's a lot going on, and it's all in that drawing, and that's specifically for alluvial, so that's starting to take shape. And then down the road, of course, just like that English paper where we put all the final definition into it and get into the meat and potatoes of writing that paper, we'll spend hundreds of plan sheets worth of detailing every single item you see on this plan view. So everything from the door handles, which you can understand, to all the complex treatment works and filtration systems, all that stuff gets detailed, both for bidding contractors and again for EPA. This is an elevation view or a cross-section through the plant, so you start to look at what it's gonna look like. You see our aeration tower and some of our filters and all the treatment works that go in here. You see it's a multi-level structure, which is important for our water treatment hydraulics. So all that goes into the mix in our, in our layouts and how we want the plant to flow. So just like that English paper, you got the opening in your body paragraphs and a closing. A water plant is very similar in that everything has to be in a set sequence so that everything goes together properly. So before, is there any questions on the raw water or the plant? I know I ran through that quickly, and there's a lot that goes into those couple drawings, so we spent countless hours putting all that together behind the scenes. And nothing's being built out of the ground, obviously, but this is what sets everything in motion, so. Prikas.
I think the next section is gonna be some drone video, and I'm just gonna have Bob talk briefly about what, when I looked at the drone video, of course, we started, it was on Stagecoach, the section that Ronnie started showing me. And I thought it was interesting, just, I don't, this is the first time I've ever been involved in anything like this, so I don't know a lot about why they do drone video and what they're looking for, but I'm looking at it, and I'm thinking, oh, that's, you know, that's, I know who lives in the house or whatever, you know, I'm looking at, I don't see what they see. So when Ronnie started to talk to me a little bit about what they're looking, why do they take the drone video and what are they looking for when they, when they review it, it really helped me understand a little bit more about the enormity of the task of engineering a project this large and the amazing detail that they have to look at every foot of the way. So it's definitely helped me kind of see why engineering is such a large portion of the project and kind of get a renewed vision for this amazing thing that we're actively involved in doing. So I thought it would be neat if you guys could hear a little bit about that. Just, I mean, I'm sure somebody here is at least at the level that I am of understanding what engineers are doing when they're looking at these types of things. So I thought it was interesting. I thought you might find it interesting also, so we're gonna let Bob talk about it a little bit.
Okay. Appreciate it. So concurrent with Max's group working on everything down at the raw water and the treatment plant, once we get a site established, we kind of have a box and parameters, and we put very detailed drawings together, which you started to see a glimpse of with those schematics. Unfortunately, then on the Henneken side, a lot of the things we're doing, adding distribution and running the water line, we do a ton, a ton of water work and input and talking to landowners and working with the board and operators. And then in the end, I show a black line on an aerial sheet, and that's all everybody sees. My kids say, what did I do today? And I show them this one plan sheet. So I think it's like Cindy said, it's all the, it's kind of all the work leading up to that that really is what goes into it. So I'm just gonna play this, if I know what I'm doing here, and I'll kind of talk as this is going on, you can get a feel for it. But these drone videos have really become quite a technology that we can utilize on the engineering side. So there's multiple things we do with them. One, we kind of call it our pre-construction video. So this allows us, in a medium that we can save, it's kind of a liability and a protection thing for us long-term. What we found for our clients is that many times when we're done building everything, we like to think we put everything back the way we found it. You don't even know we're there, the water line's buried. So this is a good record of, here's what our path looked like. And then we have kind of proof as we deal with landowners, and we wanna treat them fair, and we get land rights and easements from them. We wanna be working with them many years in the future. So it kind of becomes our record of, here's what it looked like before, and we'll make sure we put it back properly afterwards. But going back to what Cindy said, at this stage of the game, we're out there starting to do preliminary layout of the water line. We have some real basic decisions to make, like which side of the road am I gonna go on? To things like how deep are we gonna go? We do duly locates to figure out other utilities that are there. It all looks pretty simple, like we could just go out on the edge of the field and start trudging them water lines, but these are rather large lines compared to what you normally see. And once we have the benefit of those locates with your buried electric and gas lines and fiber optics and telephone, there's a lot of things to work around. So this also becomes a tool for us that we can go back and refer to to start to decide, are we on the edge of the road? Once we get our right-of-way figured out, are we gonna be 20 feet out into the field? What other utilities exist? It starts to help give us a path, how much tree clearing is there gonna be? Road culverts, crossroad culverts? Does someone have a septic system that we have to stay away from? So all those things kind of go into the mix as we're determining where to put this cross-country water line, where we're gonna fit it in. And then, of course, we do have the land rights, just because in one case, I may guess we're gonna go on the north side of the road. If we don't have success in getting those easements, there's times I'm gonna have to jump to the south side of the road. So there's, this is quite a dynamic situation, and there's a lot of back and forth with that part of the process. So I'm gonna go to the... So I'm going to go to the next slide and kind of picking up where that last one left off there. So, so this is another example, uh, we are going to go through people's yards and pastures. Sometimes they have landscaping or structures, or in this case, a very nice PVC fence. So all these types of things are things we commonly work around. We've done it many times, uh, we know how to install our water line. There's improved driveway surfaces. We have to make decisions like, are we going to open cut? Are we going to bore? How are we going to make each individual connection? So every running foot along this entire fifty mile route, we'll have one of our people out there assessing this, making those determinations. We'll put it on paper, we'll bring it to the alluvial board, they'll make decisions, you know, we'll, we'll have some roadblocks and the board will help us work through those in concert with the operations staff. At the same time, we're also looking at cost, so are we along the edge of the road? We need to work with the road commissioners, they're going to have to maintain their ditches. Uh, you see here, you got trees both sides. We're looking at, can we clear those? How wide of a path? We got to get environmental permits to do that. You can only clear trees certain times of the year. Um, do we do benching? Do we, you know, there's, there's many different decisions we have to make and we're trying to get this to where it's the most economical so that when our contractors bid on it, they have the easiest path to keep costs down, which is the goal of the entire project. Um, and of course here, we're getting down into the flat. This is Stagecoach Road, I believe, probably, so I should touch base with Ronnie on that, but I've been there years ago when we ran CMC's line, so we'll, we'll be coming up on the Coopan Creek Crossing. And, and on, here's, I guess, a s- side road intersection looking at, so we're making decisions of how deep, how deep does our bore pit need to be? How long does the bore need to be? What type of pipe material do we use? Um, there, there's different types of material we use based on if we're open cut or if we're going to road bores. And then as you get into the creek, um, there's special environmental permitting you need to do there for directional drilling, uh, to make sure we don't impact those larger bo- uh, bodies of stream crossings, so. That in a nutshell is, is a lot of the things we're doing. And then as those decisions get finalized, again, like these plan sheets you see in front of you, there's a plan view on the top and a profile you, profile view on the bottom half, we start to put in much more definition and we show those road crossings and we show the length of the bores and we show the other utilities and, again, that's something the contractors use to bid on and the only EPA uses to then approve the project, so. You'll see stacks and stacks of those plan sheets at some point that we can share as the project goes on. Did you have anything else to add Cindy or is there other questions or?
I don't think so. I, I just felt like that really helps me visualize what, um, what the step-by-step project, what the process is for, um, putting that line in the ground. I mean, it's, it's good to know the specifics and how complex that task is, um, so I thought it was interesting when he kind of walked me through it, so.
I wish we had had this technology twenty years ago when we were running lines for Central McCoopan County and some of these same roads.
Yeah.
Um, you know, it would have been hugely beneficial to see the condition of things and, like at this crossing, sometimes we use it during construction to pinpoint exactly where the lines went in the ground, where valves go and things like that, so.
And he talked a little bit too about the size of the pipeline that if we're going to be running, being so large, there are some differences and if you're boring, how far out you have to start and things like that. Um, so that was all interesting to me just, because those things, you know, you can see those things, you can look at this and see fifty problems with what you're trying to do and complexities that are frustrating, but to me, it just looks like really interesting, um, opportunities to, to do something new. And, um, so I, it was, it helped me to be more excited about the project and I hope it, I hope that this accomplishes that for you as well, um, just kind of reconnecting with what we're, what we're doing out there and, um, something that Carlinville is to be a part of. So, um, I hope this was helpful to you. Um, if anybody has any questions, um, certainly do that. Bob's here and take advantage of it. If you guys have questions regarding this.
Anybody have any questions?
Would you mind just saying what kind of pipe they'll be?
Uh, we're, we're looking at differences between ductile and plastic and sizes and it might not be all one type the whole route, as you well know, so we'll be talking to the board about things like cause versus benefit and longevity of pipe materials and things like that.
I'm wondering, um, on the, uh, the block, uh, diagram of the, uh, plant, you had several sludge lagoons. If, if that water is so clear, how come we got to have sludge lagoons? What's the sludge?
As part of the lime softening process, which is common of any well treatment, it just, it's temporary storage and then they'll take it and land apply it.
Would you repeat his question? I couldn't hear what he asked.
I'm sorry?
Would you repeat his question? I couldn't hear what he asked, I'm sorry Ed.
Why the need for the sludge lagoons if the water we're starting with is as, of such good or clear quality, to use his term?
Yeah.
Extremely common with that type of process. City of Jerseyville, same water, same, same process?
So the sludge is a byproduct of treating the water?
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Now, is that sludge useful for anything? It's got calcium in it, I suppose?
Yeah, uh, again, Illinois EPA is behind the scenes, but many times they take that and they end up land applying it. They work out a deal with some of the local farmers and they're able to take so much of it. They, they look at loading calculations on their land area and they can, they can use it like that.
So it's just not totally useful?
That's right. Yeah, we try to regenerate everything that, that we can.
Any other questions?
Yes ma'am.
Is this the main trunk line still or will this be Carlinville's line coming down Stagecoach Road?
This particular section is the main trunk line. It will be alluvial's transmission, that's right.
It's going to, is it still going to come down Route sixteen to Shipman?
Um, yeah, there, there's-
At one fifty-nine or how, where are you taking that?
Yeah, that's a good question. We're actually working on things that are going on right now. This is a conceptual view of where we would like it to go, but as you know, if we run into a situation where, uh, a landowner, um, refuses a sign or if we have a situation where other members have interest or, or we find a more economical route to go, we could shift slightly a mile or two north or south on a parallel road, but in general, this is a route we'd like to take. So sixteen, all the blue is sixteen. This stick is sixteen. We actually, I'll call it the Jerseyville bypass, kind of like the term they use on the highway. We're going to drop down and go around Jerseyville. Um, and then we'll head east this, this route here also. I can't see it well myself, I'm going to have to look on this little map, but I believe it's a mile south of Iowa sixteen. Yeah, that's like over towards the southwestern high school region, so. Does that answer your question or were you in, wondering in a specific location?
Well, at, at what point does a branch off? You're going to have to go to Dorchester at some point.
Right.
Where does that branch?
There's a branch here, um-
Is that on one fifty-nine, like in that area?
Yeah, that is higher than fifty-nine, that's a good location.
Okay.
Yeah, and this is, this is down here is the node. This would be like kind of the proposed Bunker Hill node and is, is this one twenty-eight or one thirty-eight? You probably know better than I that goes into Dorchester, just to give you some bearing. Yes, sir.
Are there public routes or rights of way along the roads like Stagecoach Road and Illinois sixteen that you can utilize without having to buy rights of way from landowners?
Yeah, there, there are public rights of way that exist, so that gets into, uh, the type of entity that you are and what your rights are with piggybacking on those. Um, our goal is to have a hundred percent of the water line on private property, so that long-term, as the roads do their improvements, but that's on the road district's nickel to relocate the water lines and not on alluvial's nickel. So we're starting at the goal of a hundred percent private easements. Uh, if we have to, we can jump out to public right of way as a last resort. And, and the, the ultimate goal is not to purchase any public or private right of way, but to get all those donated. Of course, in twenty nineteen, that's not likely to happen, but that's where we're going to start. Yes, sir.
Um, I, I, I think I've asked this before, it's been asked before, but eminent domain is, is an option or not?
Um, eminent domain, you would have to talk to the project attorney to see what his thoughts are. My understanding is it is an option, but we don't intend to exercise it and we have not on any of our rural systems in twenty-five years.
Any other questions?
Thank you for your patience. Cindy knows how to reach me if you have questions after the meeting that you didn't think of tonight.
Thank you Bob.
Thank you Bob.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Um, so I hope that was helpful or interesting to, um, the members of this board. Um, if you have any questions about it in the future, I, you can always reach me and I can ask any questions to, uh, Bob or Ronnie or Max, so feel free to ask anything you need.
So we're going to move down to the water purchase agreement for I and your company see.
Um, so in your packet, you will have a final copy of the water purchase agreement that Illinois, uh, Illinois has sent to you for your approval. Um, we did work on this, um, with input from Dan, Health and, um, with the city attorney also, so we made sure that we, uh, looked at the contract for limited, we had a limited preliminary, um, agreement to look at and we, we tweaked it so that we could make it fit for our specific needs and each entity, we were able to do that for each entity. So, um, that's kind of the, one of the best parts is that we were able to look at it for each entity individually. So I'm not going to go to a great deal of detail. I appreciate you guys being so patient and giving me a lot of time tonight. So I'm not going to do a lot of detail because the plan is that I want to give it to you tonight, give you an opportunity to look it over and write down questions you might have. We're going to go to the finance committee and Public Works with it next week. I will come to finance, I'll, I'll already be at Public Works, so I can answer any questions that you have there, um, so that you have time to look at it, time to think what your questions might be or what your concerns might be. We can talk about it in committee and then obviously we'll talk about it again when we come back second meeting. Um, the process is, and it's stated on page one of the contract, that, uh, we have to have a, um, a resolution approving the contract and authorizing the mayor to, um, sign it. So I will put that on the agenda for the next council meeting, so that will give us time in between to meet, ask questions, talk about it in a smaller forum. We're not trying to do a lot of other things. So, um, that'll be next weekend, the meetings. So we've now presented each of the current members with their agreements and each contract is individualized to their situation. So, um, Carlinville's contract is in front of you, has specific language that, um, protects our interests and our unique situation. So I'm just going to hit a few of the high points and then we'll send it to, to, um, to finance and Public Works for discussion. Um, page one just shows what the process that we have to go through, really have a resolution. Um, the mayor has to sign it to enter into the agreement. Um, we'll go to page two. There is something I wanted to point out. You'll notice that at the top it says to, to refer to Exhibit A. When you get to the back, Exhibit A is empty. So the reason for that is that we don't have a legal description yet of where the exact meter location is. We're still a little bit out from doing that. We know it's going to be, we believe it's going to be at Rinnecker Road. Um, so that will be, the legal description will be added in the future, so, um, you, that's, that's not there for now. And that's not on anybody's because we have tentative locations, but one of the things about this project is that there's still a lot of moving parts, so there, that, that hasn't been added yet. Um, let's see. So, and, and some of that will be determined by the easement process, so we need to make sure that we leave that open for now, that there will be, uh, a site of connection, that'll be the general location. We'll put the legal description in when we get that. Um, on pages three and four, talks a little bit about our, um, contract is an exclusive contract, so we're going to purchase water exclusively from Illinois Alluvial. Um, it does add in a, an exception for emergencies or the inability of the seller to provide maximum quantities. That's for the, for our protection, um, so that we first of all know that Illinois Alluvial is going to do what it's supposed to do. And secondly, that it, we may have an emergency situation before, before we get this project completed, Carlinville may need supplemental water. So, uh, we left that in the contract that we can, um, enter into purchase agreements with our current, uh, partners to purchase additional water if we need it. So there are discussions about how we might be able to pull water from Central McCoopan or Henderson to supplement Carlinville Lake if that's necessary to get us through to, uh, when Illinois Alluvial takes over supplying our water. So that is, uh, protected in part, it's B, the purchaser agrees sections, section one really, it talks about that. In section three, it talks about the water rate, which I know is what everybody wants to talk about. So the water rate currently is four dollars and thirty cents per thousand, that's for a projection at the moment. It can, um, it can be adjusted once construction is completed and the actual cost to produce the water has been determined. Um, we still have at least two very interested entities who have not made commitments yet, but I believe that at least one of them will, and at that point, that number will go down. So, um, I, I can't say, I can't say that they've said they're, you know, they've signed anything or anything like that. I do believe that it, that that number will go down. So, um, and it is our, and everybody on the board, it is our hope and our job to make sure that we do the best we can to make sure it stays low, because every person at that table also pays that rate. So, um, we, we want to make sure that we get it at the best rate that we can. So that's where we're starting right now with the current members. Um, and again, you know, a project like this, really anything that you go to do like this is built on a certain level of trust in the members and your representatives to protect your interests. Um, so, um, I think we have to remember that as we go into this discussion. But, um, ultimately, the city of Carlinville is still responsible for its rates. I mean, this board still decides what your water rate is in town to its users and its bulk users. So we will still have the latitude to decide how we handle it from there. This is the bulk rate that the company sells water to Carlinville. Um, so, and I, I also handed out some water and sewer rate survey of some local communities just for your comparison and for discussion when we get to committee if you want to talk about any of that. So, um, the city still has a lot of things that it can determine, but that is what the company is saying to the city as far as the rate that we will sell water. Um, on page three, oh, I already talked about some, sorry, page four, um, we did have an addition. Dan was very proactive about this and I appreciated that. He wanted some more specific language in about how, uh, and I believe our city attorney also contributed in this conversation, we spoke about it, um, the, to make it more, a little more timeframe, a little more difficult, honestly, for the company to change the water rate. Um, so it can be increased, but it takes a hundred and twenty days notice to the purchaser and it has to have a two-thirds supermajority roll call vote to change. So, um, that, you know, again, is, and we have to have a reason why we do it, so you can't just have no reason or a not-for-profit, so, um, there are some more strenuous things put in there to protect, um, to protect us from having an increase that we weren't prepared for, especially a, a city board has to pass some things and it takes a little bit longer, so those protection, that protection is in there. Um, page six of the contract, again, it just goes into metering. It, it just points out again that the city is still billing its own customers, the city still maintains its own lines and it sets its own rates and it has to decide its bulk rate for itself. So I know there's a lot of conversation about what we do with our bulk users and our large users and that conversation is something the city will decide based on its decisions about its rate. It's not the company's decision, it's yours at this table. So, um, those will still be in our control. Um, there's some length, you just like charge penalty, thing like that, typical contract things, you can read all of those things. The number nine on that page is the term of this contract because of the length of the rural development loan, it being forty years, this is a forty-year contract, but we would intend, obviously, that this would be a longer-term solution than that. So, um, on page seven, um, there's a, there's a restriction about, uh, the bulk rate users of what you can, basically what you can sell to protect our water supply, protect, um, each other in, in the, in the alluvial board, how we, how we function together, so you can read through that, um, and kind of just see what that, how that helps. Um, then on the last, page eight, the end of the contract is just saying that it's our, it's our intention to be delivering water in five years and, um, if we're unable to do that, then this contract may, at the option of the purchaser, be rescinded. be rescinded. So that is also in there for our protection. Again, there are exhibits at the back, Exhibit A is, does not have a legal description yet. Exhibit B is a water rate calculation, there's how, how that's calculated, there's a multiplier there. We are, obviously we're a not-for-profit, but just like the city can't, we can't operate, we, we, a not-for-profit can't operate in the red, we have to stay in the black. So you have to have some, and rural development loans require that you have a certain amount of cash reserve for, you know, they're not going to give you $66 million and then say, I hope you figure out how to save for a really bad day when something breaks or whatever. They oversee the entire process of that. They make sure, they actually set the parameters of what you have to have in cash reserve, how much saving you have to have for, you have to have long-term projects and short-term projects for improvements, you have to save for those things, and they oversee all of those financial portions. They're not going to give us the money and walk away. So we're definitely going to have a high level of accountability to rural development with the money and, and how we save for our future, so we protect the project also. So those things are in there if you want to read through that. That's kind of the quick highlight version of the contract, but you have it and you may certainly read through that and be ready to have your questions answered. I'll do the best I can. At the, the next council meeting, Ronnie or Bob or Max or a combination will be here to answer any questions that I can't. I'll collect questions at committee meetings and I'll do the best that I can to answer what I can at those meetings. So, but this is, this is our draft.
Since this is a legal contract, Dan, Mr. O'Brien, are you going to be at these meetings so that we can ask you?
I'll be happy to.
I think, don't you guys think maybe we should be in case we have questions that pertain to the contract? Whereas I don't think Max and Ronnie would be the proper authority to answer those questions.
No, yeah, I, I agree with that. They could really just answer technical questions if you had technical questions about the, what's in, right, so, yes, I agree with that.
Any other questions?
Can you answer one question now?
Sure.
I have several, but.
I'll certainly try.
You said that each city has a little bit different of a contract. I was under the understanding that we were all going to be treated as equals in this. What should I expect to be different in each contract?
Well, I don't think equal always means everything's exactly the same. So I wouldn't use that language necessarily. I would say that the water rate is the same, the provisions of purchase, I mean, the provisions of purchasing water are slightly different depending on if they still have partial contracts with their current seller. So there, there are some differences. They're not, the water rate, everybody pays the same water rate, everybody has the same vote. That doesn't mean that everything is exactly the same in the contracts. And, and those contracts are not, I, I don't vote on those, I'm not voting on that contract, so I didn't bring those. Those are for those entities. But I, I can find, I can get you a list of what some of the differences are if you want to know that, but those, those are for those entities, the rights of each entity are protected and they are equal. They are the same, we have the same rights. We purchase water for the same price.
I would like to see the differences.
Cindy, do you know, how are they going to offset the costs with, Jersey Rural has a contract with American Water until 2022, I believe, right? How are you going to offset the cost of them purchasing water from American Water versus the cost of production and supplying us with water?
I believe they have a minimum that they're going to be, they're required to keep purchasing. Is that correct? Do you know?
Right, yeah.
They have a minimum, they have to keep purchasing from American Water.
Right, there, there's a minimum now, so if, if the water were ready today, they could start buying some water from Aluvial today. They don't necessarily have to buy every single drop from that supplier the way it works, depending on if it's termed an emergency connection or not emergency or things like that. But you threw out the term 2022, you know, that could align very well with, with what we're, with what we're doing with this program.
Would it really just start?
Right.
They're the only ones.
It's going to depend on all that.
I believe they're the only ones that have a current contract with someone else, and that would be terminated by the time we're supplying water, is my hope. So I don't think it'll be an issue for the current members, but that is one of the things that has to be provided for in their contract so that we don't violate, they don't violate a contract that they have, whether that's a year, it's not an extensive amount of time, so those are parts of, parts of the agreements.
Cindy, my question is, I got two, two of them actually. You know, just like you said earlier that we set our own bulk rates here in town for our bulk customers, wouldn't Illinois Aluvial Regional Water look at that same concept if they brought in a Jerseyville versus bringing in a Dorchester? That Jerseyville going to take a lot more water and give a lot more volume to run their plant, making their more plant more efficient, more volume, the more efficient you get. You bring in a lot of smaller towns, they get the same rate as these big entities, it just doesn't make sense to me. We don't even do it in our, our own water, and most businesses don't do it. More volume you get of something, you get a more of a discount. For everybody that comes on board, brings in 15 houses versus brings in a thousand, they get the same 15 over here, get that same rate that's the same as a thousand users? I mean, I don't understand that concept of why you wouldn't offer a better rate to a bigger city that takes more rate.
Well, I think that, to me, and Bob, feel free to talk if you'd like to, to me, the difference is, first of all, it's not even the same, it's not apples to apples to look at this company and a municipality, how they sell water. I mean, they're just different entities, they don't function the same. So to me, the benefit of giving everybody the same rate is that everybody has the same interest, everybody, I mean, whatever you vote on, you're paying that too. And also, we've, we've said from the beginning, we also wanted to include members that may have potential for future growth. So Dorchester's a great decision for us in a future growth type situation. So, I mean, you have to think long-term as well as short-term, and I think it was a solid decision to include them in the project. I think that everybody wants everything equal and the same until we start talking about water rate, and then everybody wants us to have a cheaper rate than our partners because we have more water users. But that's not how a board like this works, and I don't think that, I think conceptually maybe it's not a concept that, that works the same way as, as the municipality does. And our municipality still gets to, to make some decisions about how we divide that rate. So you still have that latitude, but that is not how we function as, as a board.
But, but point being is, the USDA is kind of looking at you guys as a business, and what do you say in the black? When you run a business, you get more volume, you get better efficiencies. Look at it as a business model, not a municipality, but a business model. If, if, let's say the city of Alton decides to come on board, you guys just say, well, no, we're going to give this town Enos the same rate we're going to give Alton. Well, just look at the, the complexities and the volume it would give you to bring on a city like that. You've got to look at it from a business standpoint, is it, can we handle it? And if it does, is it brings our chemical costs, it brings everything down, bring in a lot bigger user than bringing on a small city.
And I can assure you that we do, we have had many conversations and we continue to about people who, entities who come forward about the cost and the potential for growth, and, and we do have those conversations, and we do think about it as a company, what, what would be best for each of our entities and for the function of the company. But I'm not sure that I, I, what is your question exactly?
Let me add a couple of small points, Cindy, just because I, and, and the Aluvial Board has discussed this, every regional board has to look at this. It's not a given that it has to be an equal cost, but that's what this board has decided to do out of cooperation and fairness and other terms that you can talk about. So your Dorchester question, they are a small user, they're going to Carlinville anyway. Dorchester is helping all of you, albeit a small daily usage. They're coming to Carlinville anyway, that line size isn't changing or getting larger because we're picking up that size of a community relative to what we're doing here in Carlinville. So they're helping you incrementally, although maybe a smaller amount than a large community would, would help you. On the other issue, some of the board members on the other end, it's not just the daily usage, so it's, it's the debt obligation, it's the original pipeline you're putting in the ground. Maybe someone close to the river would say, look at all this money we're putting out there to get to Carlinville. So we're taking a lot of debt to do that. They're not playing those games with, what's everybody incrementally paying? They said, we're all in this together. We might add something to the mix, maybe our usage is more valuable, maybe the fact that we're closer to the plant takes less cost to get there, but for now, this entire board has said, we're treating everyone equally. Those are some other points that I know you guys have looked at.
Yes, I, I mean, that's from the start, Ben, the whole, the whole, from the beginning of this con, this whole concept around this table, it was talked about as everybody having the same level of vote on the board. So I, I just don't, I mean, I understand your concern, I, that's the structure of the, of the company at this point.
My other, my, my other question is two-part, was you said about American Water and going online, these are unlike water systems, one's groundwater, one's surface water, American Water is surface, so you can't blend the waters, correct? You can't if you're on the surface, like we can get it from Litchfield, you can get it from Otter, you can get it from Henderson, you can change that, but you can't intermix the well water with the surface.
That's generally a fair statement. It depends specifically on each system and the water and techniques you can use and chemicals you can add, but in general, yes, that's a fair statement.
So as I say, once we go, you don't have that option to interchange unless you have another groundwater system.
Right, or unless, in the case of a rural system, when you're diverse geographically and elevation-wise, some systems like that have elected to have separate pressure zones, or they might have one pressure zone on one supplier and another pressure zone on another supplier. In municipalities, that isn't typically the case, but in a larger rural system where you have miles and miles of terrain, sometimes that works.
Any other questions?
Okay.
Yes, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Okay, yes.
We were talking about having a backup supply should something go wrong, and you were mentioning, and here you mentioned Henderson or Carlinville, McCougan.
Central McCougan.
Central McCougan, thank you. Are there lines large enough to supply Carlinville, meet Carlinville's needs, once we take our plant offline?
No, I, I mean, it wouldn't be at this point. My understanding is that no, they could not supply our full daily need, they could supplement our need until we get to a point where we're fully on with Illinois Aluvial. So the, the possibility is that we could take supplemental water from them, like say we had to, we could mix with Lake One or go off Lake One, supplement Lake Two if we had, if the turbidity gets very bad. All of that would have to be worked out, how, I, I can't say that I know how all of that works, other than to say that no, they can't supply our full daily usage.
How would that work then?
I don't know that I understand your question, ma'am.
If we had to supplement our daily usage with Henderson, where would that line come in and how would we, how could we get by with that?
Jump in, say me down if I say something wrong.
Do we have a line already in service?
Yeah, you have a couple of.
With Henderson?
Nearby or probably a physical connection already in, in one or two locations, if you can utilize those.
Yeah, you want to scan up?
Sure, good. We do have a connection to Central McCougan right now. During the winter months, we use about 700,000 gallons a day, something to that effect. With some piping, stuff down at Central McCougan, if we had an agreement in place with those folks, they could do some repiping down there and they could at least send us a portion in the general, I'm going to say around 75 to 80% of what we would need to get by during the winter months. During the summer months, we pump a little bit more, we get closer to about a million. So they would not be able to supply all that. But I think it's probably worth noting though, that if we were using a million gallons a day, and you could pick up, say, 650,000 or so, something like that from Henderson, then we would only be drawing 350,000 out of our own supply. So we're, our supply now from the debt readings that we did this summer, so we know approximately how much water we have out of Lake One and we know, we know what we have out of Lake Two, that we could put these agreements in place well in advance now, you know, in the next couple of months if we so chose to, and then probably never, ever act on those, but we would have that part done if we needed to. And then, you know, if we, if we needed to, we could draw, you know, perhaps a portion of the water from Central McCougan, something like that. So if you're only taking 350,000 gallons out of the lake a day instead of a million, you've actually made the lake like three times larger now because you're only going to draw a third of water out of it, okay? And we are talking about a timeframe here of three to five years, something to that effect. And last I checked, Lake Two was about a foot and a half from being full, okay? So the struggles and all the problems that we ran through this last summer has paid dividends because we haven't taken much water out of Lake Two, so we are graining ground on that front too.
Do you think Central McCougan uses water from Carlinville?
They do on occasion, and I, for us, we don't know when they draw it, there's a bill out there, so when they need it, they take it from us and we send them a bill one a month, just like we do everybody else, and so it just varies on what their needs are.
I, I just want to add that all of those things are things that we will need as a board to decide, but those are not things that are covered in this contract. So the, the decision before the board now is, is just the terms of this contract, that would be a separate conversation. Good, good to protect our interest to be able to do that, add some redundancy to the system also, but that is not included in this contract. That would be with Carlinville's, that would be a Carlinville decision. So tonight, what we do for emergency water is, is not before the board, this is.
But Cindy, it does say purchaser agrees requirements that if for some reason Illinois Aluvial cannot meet the demands, that we should consider Central McCougan or Henderson. So it technically is in this contract.
We will, we are, we are connected and will be to those, yes. So that is, to me, a slightly different situation than what we're discussing right now as far as supplementing our water to get us to on Aluvial. So I understand what you're saying and that, that is true. The conversation we're ha, we were having about emergency hookup now is not necessarily covered, it allow, the contract allows for us to do that. It doesn't say we're doing that or how to do that or what it costs, it says you can do that. So I just wanted to make sure we understood that that's not necessarily part of this contract. So definitely bring all of the discussion we need to have, we can do that, some of that in committee, so that other people can attend also.
Is everyone fine with that, taking it to Finance on Monday night and Public Works on Tuesday, yes?
One last question, ma'am. I've had people ask if they could see this contract.
Oh, sure.
Can people look at it?
Sure, it's a public document, it's a public document, so anyone can look at it. That's why we send the packet, we go out, go to Finance on Monday, go to Public Works on Tuesday, and want everyone to have a, have a look at it, okay? Everything, everyone's good on that? All right, if that's agreed on, we'll go on down to the new ordinance books.
Appreciate it, Bob.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Okay, the new ordinance book.
Yeah, I put mine on.
To ask what it was going to take for us to get a copy of those books and, attorney O'Brien called me, and said that he was planning to meet with the confire, and in fact he set a date on the 21st of February and invited me to come. We're going to go policy by policy, ordinance by ordinance, to check the updates. So it will be, it will be done and the books will be handed out hopefully soon.
Dan, I made the name tag for everybody.
Whatever the date was, I told you this, it's Thursday, whatever that is.
Next on the agenda, that one's taken care of, next on the agenda, the quiet zone.
That was me again, and just checking for an update on that application, if you've started it, where we are with it.
I haven't had much time to look at it, I've looked at the train rail summaries for the federations here. I've also looked at, the city of Bloomington successfully did this, and so I've looked at what they've done. This is a multi-year process, and of course that'd be up to the mayor and the council, but it's a lengthy process, and when I get time, I'll continue to work on.
Okay, moving on, we will drop down to our zoning advisory report, okay?
Yes. Yes. Carlinville planning the zoning commission held a public hearing on January the 8th to consider a request by Dennis Armour to replat 868 South Locust in Carlinville, and the commission voted six to zero to approve the request. You have a diagram of the proposed replat there, and Mr. Armour is looking for your approval tonight of that, so he can hire a surveyor and have a file flat drawn up to you back.
Any questions on the report? Okay, here in none, we'll move on. Next on the agenda is the enterprise, oh, yes. Okay, sorry, all right. Is there a motion? Motion by Alvin Toon, second by, uh, Hyder. Motion by Oliver Toon, second by Oliver, uh, Hyder. Any other questions? If not, the court's calling.
Bilber?
Yes.
Campbell?
Hi.
Downey?
Yes.
Ober?
Yes.
Rothmeyer?
Hi.
Hyder?
Yes.
To?
Yes.
Okay, motion is carried, eight to zero. Next on the agenda.
Let me just put something out here. We don't have a final survey and so we don't have exact information. So when we get that information, there'll be a document for the council. Okay, so I just wanted to make sure everybody understood, maybe I'll go on again with the final, um, survey information.
Okay, next on the agenda is the, um, is the enterprise zone presentation. I have with me, um, tonight, um, with us, Lauren Ripley and Jeff Torcelli. Uh, these gentlemen have been in here and have explained to us and, um, to Steve and myself and Dan and several others here about the application that they're about to, that he's got. The enterprise zone application has been increased considerably. And it's not just a one or two page document in the order. It is not going to be somewhat of a elaborate going with the process. So Lauren and Jeff will show you, um, what we're going to be doing here with the enterprise zone.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, it's a pleasure to be here this evening to give you sort of an overview of the enterprise zone, uh, process. The official name of your enterprise zone is the McCougan County, McCougan County Enterprise Zone, although, uh, the majority of the territory, uh, is currently in the, uh, city of, uh, Carlinville. Um, and just by background, um, I'm Lauren Ripley. I have about almost forty years' association with, uh, the mayor and, uh, late Senator Vince and Jeff Torcelli from Springfield, Christian County, uh, about that same, well, he's not quite that old, so. But we've had a lot of working experience both with, um, uh, your, your public officials here and there's probably no one that really understands enterprise zone, uh, law as, as well as, um, as well as we do. Your current enterprise zone has been in effect since nineteen ninety-one. Uh, it's a thirty-year, uh, zone, which means it's set to expire at the end of twenty twenty-one. Uh, the enterprise zone law, as, uh, Mayor alluded to, was amended in two thousand twelve. That substantially, uh, changed the process. That law essentially sunsetted every enterprise zone. Current law, uh, provides for ninety-seven traditional enterprise zones around, uh, the state and that law set this process that sunsetted those over, uh, a period of a few years with an opportunity for existing and new zones to come in with a new application, uh, for a new designation. No existing zone has any benefit or any sort of, uh, you know, right to, uh, a new designation. Everything is established to, to be on an equal footing basis based on a, a set of, uh, eleven, uh, criteria that are outlined in, in, in both the PowerPoint as, as well as in the, uh, the written documentation. But they, the PowerPoint is sort of a summary of the, of the more written narrative. And as Mayor pointed out, we were down about a month ago and met with, um, with, uh, Mayor and Steve from, from the city and, um, uh, Mayor Hicks, uh, and a couple of representatives, representing Chairman Dragovich, Tony Armour and, and Aaron Coyle, I believe. Mayor invited us to come back to present to the full council here this evening. We're also meeting with the McCougan County Economic Development Board and, and I believe some of the other community mayors, uh, on Wednesday evening as well. And we just wanted to really kind of explain what this process is about and why we believe that it's a, uh, it, it's a good tool. It is a good tool. There are just very few local economic development, uh, tools that are available to, uh, communities and counties to, to attract businesses. And, and I know that, uh, Mayor, as we discussed, you've been successful over the last year or so bringing in a couple of additional three, three new businesses and you're working with a couple more. And, you know, we've, Jeff and I have been involved in economic development, uh, most of our careers. And we know that when businesses are looking for expansion opportunities or places to locate, it's just one of the first fundamental questions is asked is, are you an enterprise zone? And if you're not, you're already starting from, uh, a power of, uh, or from a position of, of weakness as opposed to a position of power. As I mentioned, the, the new law is much more highly competitive. You can look at your, um, at the, at the, at the slide deck. Uh, there were, in the first round in twenty fourteen, I think there were forty-nine zones awarded. Each one of these eleven criteria has points assigned to them. You're evaluated on each one of the, um, eleven criteria with the, uh, the idea to get as many points as, as you possibly, uh, possibly can. What we've seen in each successive round is to be successful, the, the bar has been raised. You had to consistently get a higher number of points. One slight disadvantage you have is that you're coming in on one of the final rounds and there's not many more zone, uh, positions, um, that are going to be left. And again, the process has gotten more competitive year after year. Uh, we've been involved in applications through the team that we put together, four members, Jeff and I represented here tonight, two others, that have collectively, uh, submitted applications in every round and consistently, uh, scored the highest. And in fact, there's two or three of those that have been worked on that were repeats, meaning that they came in one year, they did not get their, uh, zone approved. They came to this team for a second application and, uh, we were able to approve the application and, and, and get them approved. The eleven criteria, if you look at those, there's a number of them that are based on, uh, economic conditions. This is a case where frankly, you know, if, if, if you have economic, um, uh, problems, that you're going to do better. And, you know, part of our job is to look at the county, look at the area and do that evaluation. Our number one goal is to make sure you get this zone. And that means that we have to, uh, define the zone, which is a geographic location that, um, that, that maximizes, uh, as many points on each one of those eleven criteria, uh, as possible. It's a, it's a significant amount of analysis that, that goes into it. Uh, other things that are looked at is support of the business community. You have to demonstrate, uh, an ability to attract investment. You have to demonstrate, uh, an ability to create and retain jobs. You have to have written, uh, commitment letters for those businesses. So we spend a substantial amount of time, uh, working with your local business, uh, local businesses to, uh, get those type of commitments. We've already had some of the discussions. Honestly, there are businesses in the Carlinville, McCougan County area that aren't in the zone that should be in the zone. They could be taking, uh, advantage and, uh, and, and getting benefits. The benefits are outlined in the zone. It's primarily sales tax, um, exemptions, investment tax credits, and in some cases, uh, utility tax, uh, uh, abadements as well. Local communities can decide to add local property tax, uh, incentives if they want. That's totally your decision. Um, that's all put together through, um, resolutions and ordinances that each community that participates in the zone has to adopt. Which is another important point. I mean, it, this is not just something that the city of Carlinville has to go alone. In fact, we would encourage you not to do that. Uh, that's why we've had discussions and will continue to have discussions with the county as well as some of the other local communities. There's sort of an unwritten rule that, you know, a regional approach is, is sort of viewed favorably by the evaluators. Um, the evaluators are, first of all, the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity. And then the final decisions are made by an enterprise zone board that was created under this new law. It's a five-member, uh, board that's, uh, appointed by the governor, meaning that at least four of the five members, uh, are going to be new members by the time our application is evaluated. That timeframe is such that applications are due at the end of this calendar year. And that seems like a lot, a lot of time, but it's not. I mean, uh, we would encourage, um, communities to get started on this process now, um, as early as, and beginning in March, to be able to, to do all the analysis that has to be done to, uh, put together what we, I believe would be a successful application. The, uh, uh, the state takes about six months of evaluation, makes recommendations to the board. The board makes the final decisions in, uh, September. This would be in the case of September of twenty twenty. With your, uh, new zone to be certified if successful on, uh, January, uh, of, uh, twenty twenty-one. At the same time, your, your current zone expires so that there's, there's no lapse in, um, in, in coverage. Covered a lot of information, I know very fast, I want to be, uh, cognizant of, of, of your time constraints, uh, but certainly, uh, available to ask, answer any questions. And I might just turn it over to Jeff to add a little more context.
Jeff, um, I see on this here, there's only nine, um, enterprise zones available in twenty nineteen. Is that right?
That's the estimated amount. The, um, the administration has some flexibility because of that whole certification process. And that's one of the points I was going to mention, is that this was the first time that we could come in and apply. It was nothing like anybody dropped the ball. It's just, it was how they expired. And going back to what Lauren's, uh, there's ninety-seven slots, you can't have any more than that. There's one or two total, but those five go apply to us. So this is the first time you do it and our experience has been, now, we're going to, we have a new governor, obviously, but we're also going to have new directors of those agencies and then a completely new board and that board with composition is a little bit disadvantaged. So we really have one shot this time. Unless something were to change where the governor would push for more enterprise zones to be added, you have to turn it into a paper because in that way, it's impossible for the board to reject it. So.
I was on the same page, you were top of my eye. I noticed twenty twenty says zero, but then in the yellows, there's no more EZ enterprise zones available until twenty twenty-eight. So we, we only expired to twenty twenty-one, are we?
Well, you'd be without one for all that duration and those are basically for the, the last ones. Kind of like the regional development authorities, those zones. So you could technically come back in, but so much time will have passed and whatnot. And when we've done the recent medals on, on the other ones that we were successful getting for them, you still have to change all your ordinances and everything to make it current, but it's still relatively the same of, of, of that that you put in. By the time you would go and try to do it that far out.
No, I'm just saying, you said until, until, so they're still available from twenty twenty through twenty twenty-eight? Or there is none available?
There, there will not be because it, it all depends upon the, the calendar sequence of, remember, these are thirty-year zones, the ones that have already been established. And just when they were approved initially versus when they expire, there's going to be this gap, uh, for a few years before any more slots are available. Because again, there's only ninety-seven is a total max at this point in time of traditional zones.
So I understand, one has to expire before the other one.
Right.
Yeah, and then, and you can't, and you can't apply. Well, originally, you could apply in the first round. When we had the Quinn administration, you could apply, anybody could apply the time they wanted. People did, there was a lot of them that came in, you see, that's a big number. And that's, then there was only something available. So then the next administration comes in, our administration, said, well, we don't interpret that that way. You can only apply two years out. So that very last round, there's a few that expire and then they can reapply with that two-year window. See, each time, all the rules change. In this last round, there only used to be ten right there, now there's eleven. So every time, everything keeps changing, it's, I'm sure that this administration probably has some minor changes as well. They'll be, uh, reviewing the awards in September from those medals of last December.
So there's only nine available in two thousand nineteen and then there's no more to expire until twenty twenty-eight?
Till the next one. Correct.
And we're in twenty nineteen right now, we can get to apply.
This is about your last shot. I mean, that's sort of the bottom line. And, and, and unless the law has changed and.
Right. But you said six months, I mean, it'd be the end of the year before we actually get the application in.
Yeah.
It's really October or November before it actually even get into the dock to be affirmed.
Right, and then that decision, um, evaluation period is, is throughout twenty twenty.
So, so twenty nineteen is awarded in twenty twenty?
Yes, 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 yes.
Applications due in the end of December and the department scores them. And then the committee typically in, well, that last two, five, two administrations, they meet three times. And those are all set in statute on when they meet for public hearings, just like this. That's what, and what we do too is different than the other consultants that do this. We take you all the way from basic, basically, the entire process all the way up to award. And that was important because in the first round, they tried to make a board change and we stopped. Otherwise, the company, or excuse me, the community representative would go down.
No, excuse me, Warren, did you mention, I think, at the, at the meeting that we had, uh, about the hospital, you tried, was that about the gas, the natural gas bill?
Yeah.
An exemption there or?
Yes.
The school or?
Black, uh, yeah.
Right, uh, currently, um, uh, the, the hospital is not in the, uh, existing enterprise zone. They are a very high utility user, obviously. They're also making substantial, uh, investment, uh, just year after year, just with, you know, just normal replacement of, of the equipment. Uh, so there comes a point in time, if, if they were part of the zone, and, and we certainly would encourage that they should be, that, uh, you know, when they hit this level of investment, then all of a sudden, they don't pay any, uh, utility tax on their electricity, on their natural gas, or on any of their telecommunications, which is a pretty significant savings. So that's part of this other additional analysis that, that we will do to identify those kinds of, uh, businesses that, uh, that really should be included.
You talked about East Main, the houses on the East Main, I believe, uh, rehab, is that what you were talking about?
Well, yeah, I mean, for those, that's all, so the unified benefit, the state of Illinois is the same for each zone. What's the beautiful part is you just design your zone and, and provide those abadements as you would like. One of the zones that I worked on, they decided it's a historic community like this. They said, well, we want to have this part of our community, uh, have the ability to get the building materials, I mean, it, um, if they're fixing up a, a structure that's old, you know, to make it a store. So there's a lot, you guys can kind of draw that how you want. And that's the neat part about it being a little tool.
Okay, any questions?
Yes.
You know, so if the, the old one had to list be the county and us, I think? And was it determined by those entities where the zone was? So it depends on, like, you're going to have a meeting with the county if they decide they want to do it and some other mayors want to do it, then you would decide between those group of people where the zone actually is and what's included in it?
And, and depending upon the number of units of government that you have in the zone, you can have a larger zone.
Okay.
So what we, again, we would do the analysis to, uh, maximize the scoring under each of the eleven criteria, but we would not anticipate, um, uh, defining an enterprise zone boundary that would encompass all of the property that could be added. So in other words, you have the ability then to come back in, as you've done recently, to add territory to the zone for kind of like a, a project that's wanting to take place. But, yeah, it's all part of the analysis that, that we would undertake.
Sarah asked my question, so we'll take care of it.
Well, that sales tax exemption on building materials is huge. We just went through that. We've had three this year. We've got two that are talking to us now. Those two, first thing they said is, what can you offer us? So enterprise zone is important for any community.
What's our next step, Mayor, to?
I think we're, I think we should send this back to Finance. There's going to be a cost. I, we like, we like your presentation, but we know it's not perfect, right? Is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
So we're gonna.
And we have presented you with a, a separate agreement on that.
Yes, I do have a separate agreement. But before we go on with that, I did talk to the county, I talked to Todd Armour several times today. They have a meeting Wednesday night, we sent a fax in to all the mayors. He and I had quite a, quite a good conversation about this. And so we'll see on Wednesday night what the Economic Development Committee is going to do. And I think, you know, just like us, we know that, you know, we have to, we, we have to take a look at it. So I do have a memorandum here along with a contract. That's why I think we should send it back to Finance. Take a look at the contract. The, you want to tell them how much it is for the initial?
Uh, sure. So the way that we structured this is sort of a two-phase process. The, the first phase takes you all the way through the, the award of the, of, of the new designation. And then the second phase being the transition from the old zone to the new zone, working with your, your zone administrator and the, your local zone board that is set up representing the units of government that are part of the zone. The first phase is a, is a total of $60,000. And then, if successful, but only if you get that award, a, a phase two of $30,000. So you're, you're for sure would be on the hook for 60. And then if successful, then 30 additional.
And, go ahead, Ben.
So that cost is, is picked up by all the different entities that are involved in this?
Theoretically, that's the way it works. There are, are some cases where we've, on these applications that we've worked on, where even some of the business community would, would pitch in. But it, it, it's really structured differently, you know, almost like on a case-by-case basis. But the idea would be a cost share.
Yeah, that, that was my question.
Yes.
County would pick up a share of Lispy, whoever, yeah.
That's why we'd like to send this back to Finance, if that would be all right with everyone. Where, take a look at it and see what, what we think. You have time to take a look at the contract. And if you, if you would like a copy of the consulting service agreement, I can make sure you have one. You would like one?
Well, could we have one for Finance?
Sure.
Yeah, you can have it at Finance.
Okay.
Would that be all right? Okay, we'll make copies. All right, any other questions?
Thank you for your time and answer.
Before we start, Steve Lee?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Steve has been really instrumental in doing a lot of the enterprise zone here. And when they come in, that's one of the first questions. I was out this past week with a couple of them, looking at some building. And that's the first thing they ask is, what can, what, what do you have to offer? The facade grant is great for some on the square, but it's not enough. And Beth, you probably know that better than.
Yeah, I mean, that's a drop in the bucket compared to what they get from an enterprise zone.
Right.
And the two.
Yeah, and the two. Yeah, you almost have to have, you have to have.
You gotta have it all.
You have to have it all.
You need a whole package.
Yeah. All right, so we're gonna send it back to Finance. We'll see, take a look at it. We'll see what kind of magic Sarah can do with the budget, right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys. Sarah's gonna work for magic, right, Sarah?
Can I go ahead and make a motion, Mayor?
Is any of mine on, is anything at stake?
I'd like to make a first adjournment.
All right, appreciate it. Motion by Oliver Downey, second by Oliver Ober. That we adjourn all of the table today, I, I want to know if you are now adjourned.
Just to tell, we have some other questions.